We will call the Addison Central School District Board meeting to order for June 5th, 2017. And if everybody would be so kind as to introduce themselves, and Steve, we'll begin with you.
Steve Orzak.
Chip Malcolm.
Harry Hansen.
Chriskey.
Nick Colston.
Victoria Jettie.
Peter Conlin.
Peter Barrows, Superintendent.
Ruth Hardy.
Mary Gill.
Vicki Wells, Assistant Assistant Student Services.
Josh Wood, Mrs. Minister.
Jason DeKetoff.
Janice Keeter.
Do we have comments from members of the public tonight? I see none. We'll move on to our next, which is about a motion to approve the minutes of May 15th, 2017.
Some move?
Thank you. Oh. Okay. Questions? Comments? Changes? Chris?
I just noticed that it said that 74% of parents responded. I think it's 70%. 70% of respondents were parents.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just, I picked that up.
It would have responded.
Yeah, that was impressive.
No, Chris, it was Chris' comment, I'm just saying. I also said something like that.
Anybody else?
Well, following along with that, the next set of percentages, it's not clear if that was the parent responses or all respondents. So it might be helpful to clarify that who it is. I believe it was all respondents following that first sentence. And I think on the summer meeting schedule, I saw specific dates, but I didn't think we had specified the August dates because we're waiting to see when a facility was available. Is that not true?
I don't think we had said that we weren't going to move from our regular time.
So August was regular scheduled dates?
Yeah, at this point, yeah. Just two from me. One that talks about, it says Peter Conlin and Ruth Hardy will look at consultants. That's actually Peter Burrows. For names of facilitators. And then the other, the other, under the category of other, and it says Mop Hillier. Since there's a little bit of sort of opinion sprinkled in that, that all came from me, so I probably should say Peter Conlin reported. As opposed to it coming from anybody else. All right. With those changes, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And abstentions, please. One abstention, Ruth? All right. The bulk of our meeting tonight will be taken up with a discussion of the strategic plan. We've all been given a copy of where we're at, but I assume that there's a slideshow for us.
It's a good assumption.
I think, Peter, it'd be great if you could clip that on.
Sure. Does that work?
Peter, if you refresh it, there's some formatting.
What's that?
Oh, you refresh it? I made the font bigger on a couple of slides.
Oh, just now?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. It was tiny.
For the board. Just seeing what the response would be. So, a lot of work went into this second strategic plan report. This is the end of year two of our five-year strategic plan. 1415 was the year that we came together. We put this together. This work happened, as you remember, for those of you that were here, at the board level, in the first kind of quarter, and then moved on to action teams and the community as we figured out where we were going as an organization and what we wanted to accomplish. So this is, this is very important to us. We knew going into this process that these kinds of things can sit on a shelf and gather dust, and they don't, they don't become living documents. They become things that you said, "Yeah, we did it. Look, see." So we have been going back as an organization, looking at this again and renewing the strategic plan. This report, as I said, the second report, we had a mid-year report, if you recall, in January, I believe, to let you know the kinds of work that we were doing in relation to the plan. This plan and this, this report, I think, took a real step forward, and I, and I feel very good about where we are going in terms of starting to assess how we're doing. It's something that those of you that were part of building the strategic plan and subsequent analysis of how we're doing as a district know how challenging it is when we have so many different systems in place right now to be able to determine with any kind of fidelity, yes, we know that the work that we're doing here, here, and here is having a positive impact. It's moving student achievement. It's increasing student wellness, et cetera. So this process of building a, a system to be able to analyze how we're doing is a long one, and I, and I think we are making progress, and I think the report articulates that pretty So the, the purpose of the, the plan obviously was, initially was to establish a unified framework. We are continuing to work on that as we become a single unified district. The timing of the strategic plan couldn't have been better in giving us a roadmap and a template. So the ACSU strategic plan is actually the ACSD plan. We're, even though we've printed all those copies, they'll still say ACSU. They're ACSD. We, we've talked a lot about equity. It's a, it's a question that kind of keeps, or it's not really a question, but it's a, it's a goal that I think we keep talking about, and we continue to work to define what equity is and how we can work to address issues of equity in our schools. So the plan, a big part of the plan is also to address some of those inequities and to be sure that every kid is getting what they need. And then serve as a focal point, defining our work. As I said, we keep coming back to the plan. We are spending our retreat this summer with administrators, taking some time to look at the plan again so that we don't get too focused just on one or two initiatives and lose sight of the whole picture. In education, that's really, really easy to do. The, the plan has three goals, as you know. Ed success, community, and systems. The, the big work that we've done this year in Ed success, we finished our IB inquiry and the board approved moving forward towards authorization with International Baccalaureate. We have further refined our essential learning outcomes, the ELOs. Our proficiency-based graduation policy is work that we are, we're just about to bring that to the board at our next meeting, and that lays the groundwork for the proficiency-based teaching and learning that we are doing at the high school. And this is in response partly to Act 77, which some of you may recall when that was passed about six years ago. Does that sound right? I wasn't here, but it, it happened, I think, a few years before I got here. And the District Management Council, which is a grant that we actually received from the state, and we're part of a cohort of 10 different school districts. Vicki will, will most likely be presenting on that, not tonight, but later on, when we get our data back from that analysis of our special ed system as a whole. Community, we started this year the Community Partnership Council, and we have our last meeting tomorrow night. That, the, the, the work of that council has been initially to work on communication. So many of you filled out a survey towards the middle of the year, and we've been analyzing and, and processing that data and have already changed a number of things that have been challenging, I think, for our community in terms of getting positive and, and quick information from our schools, from the district. We are continuing that work into next year and looking at how we communicate both as leaders and how we communicate from the classroom. So these are important, important things that are coming from our community, and this council has been very helpful in helping to guide some of that work. We also have established a special ed leadership council, which has been working to unify our approaches. As you know, we centralized a number of years ago, but we are continuing to work on the actual cohesive unification of the system. And that work will continue into next year as we build our, our IB framework and our inclusionary practices. Systems, I think systems right now are, are something that we're focusing on very acutely with the transition. We did a lot of work tonight as part of that kind of systems change and development. So there's systems work that's happening because we have to do it, and we're not bringing lots of focus and acumen to it. But there's a lot of other work we're doing to create more efficiency so that we don't have lots of, of kind of microsystems that are challenging for people to, to work within and, and work between. And so that, that systems work will be continuing into next year, and the, the assessment in the report outlines all of the work that we have done this year on systems. We, we talked in our last report a year ago about key performance indicators and how we could accurately assess how we are doing as a district. So if, if someone came up to you and asked, "Is, is ACSD doing a good job? Is it working? Are the things that we're spending our time on resulting in some kind of impact on students?" So the idea behind the key performance indicators is beginning to establish some data points that we can reference longitudinally over time to look at how we are doing to try to create some kind of composite view of our progress. If you look at any one of these indicators individually, they don't paint a whole picture, and this probably isn't all of the indicators that are important. But this is a starting point for us in terms of trying to winnow down the incredible number of indicators that we take in and assess every year to some that we can focus on and talk about that, that have some kind of important pivotal role in how students are doing. So some, some window into how we're doing that is directed enough for us to be able to say, "Yes, the work we're doing is making an impact." So these are the five key performance indicators that we are kind of starting from essentially in this strategic plan report to assess our work in year two of the strategic plan. So there's the kindergarten, Ready for Kindergarten Survey, and I'll be talking about all these in a moment. Graduation rates, the smarter balanced assessment, personalized learning, flexible pathways, and citizenship opportunities. And those of you that are on UD3 probably hear some resonance with the E-report that we've been talking about. We've been assessing our performance at the high school and middle school levels for a number of years. And students' perceptions of safety, support, and engagement in school, Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So these are the five key performance indicators that we have highlighted in the report. If you haven't had time to dig into the report as a whole, I would, I would urge you to do that. There's a lot of really good information there. I do want to thank Caitlin. She spent a ton of time on that. And finally incorporated color in a really powerful way. So here is our data from the Ready for Kindergarten Survey. And this is a survey that's been done for a number of years, but it was retooled for this year. And so this is kind of our baseline year for this, for this survey. This is a, a very important data point for students. Sorry, I'm in the way for some folks. What was striking to us when we looked at this were the, when you look at percent ready in Vermont versus ACSD, we had boys at 92% when the Vermont number was 77, and then girls at 82, and Vermont at 86. So that was, that was striking, something that we'll be looking at, I think, next year when we look at this survey. Our hopes also is that with all of the work happening with Universal Pre-K, assuming that more kids are gaining access to pre-K experiences, these numbers will shift and we'll hopefully see an increase here in terms of kids that are ready at kindergarten. So graduation rates, you can see this year are 15, 16, a slight dip down. This was true in Addison County as a whole. And you can see here the, the plot from 2011 to 2015, 16.
We're not asked questions?
Yeah.
Can you explain how the six-year graduation rate would be lower than the five-year graduation rate? Or is it a mistake?
Where, which year are you, where are you talking?
15, 16.
So it, it tracks across from year to year. So kids that are in, change is bad.
It's not the same cohort?
No. So that, so you have to go diagonally. So I've actually got a...
Diagonally.
So you start, ACSD here is four-year. These kids in the next year are here, and the next year they're here.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So here's our assessment data. This is, again, this is our baseline for smarter balanced assessment. And you can see we primarily do pretty well compared to Vermont. One of the things that we realize we need to start doing more is disaggregating our, disaggregating our data to really look at where are we being successful and where do we need to focus more energy. So that disaggregating by free and reduced lunch status, looking at, at the supports we have in individual schools, and, and making changes as necessary. And here's Matt. It's, it's hard to gather much from a, a one-time summative assessment, especially, I think, in, in light of nationally, how the, some national assessments are being seen. So this is important data, but it has to be interpreted in relation to all the other data that we are collecting. We are also, our elementary schools are using the FAST assessment. That, I think, is more meaningful. They're, they're getting that more frequently. They're getting reading and math information through the FAST assessment, which is more actionable. When you, by the time you get your smarter balanced assessment information, it's not necessarily actionable at the classroom level as much as it is at more of the kind of policy or at, at a higher level. Personalized learning opportunities. We've, we've begun to collect these. We started this process last year and then are expanding it this year. Here are some highlights from that data, the full rundown. This chart's super long, and it's in your report, so you can take a look there. You can see that we, we have made some progress and are, are continuing to, to try to build these experiences for kids. You can see also, there's a, at the Career Center, we've, we dropped from 177 students to 156 in 1617. So part of that is due to enrollment patterns. That's, I, I think, an area of growth as the Career Center's going through change, and we're going through change. I see that as a place that we can really work together. That work has begun, I know, and I think will continue into next year. It's, it's going to be an important thing for us to, to be working on next year as we are both, we are unifying, and the Career Center is going through new leadership as This is the WRBS data from 2015. We will be getting this 2017 data fairly soon. Caitlin, do you know when that's coming?
I think so.
No?
I think we did it in February or March.
Right. So, so soon, we'll be getting follow-up data. One of the things that, when you go back through the strategic plan, the, the community action team really spent a lot of time looking at the WRBS and gathering data from there to, to, to think about what, what's really meaningful for, for students to be successful. And they, they looked a lot at the social and emotional reality that students bring to the classroom. And one of the biggest things in the research is having kids know someone who cares about them in school. That, that is a really, really critical connection that is transformational for kids. So the, what, right here, the, the second, the second line there, agree that in their community, they feel like they matter to people. Vermont is at 50%, and then MUHS at 55. So that's a number that, that's important to us, that we want to see that number increase. Because that has an impact on all sorts of other parts of a student's life, both their academic and social and emotional well-being. Our next steps for this work, really, is mapping the work of next year, and we've got, we've got a big plate. I think one thing that we're really realizing is that we, we have enough information right now to know what's coming, and I, and I think it's going to be really critical for us to organize and limit the number of extraneous things that we're doing. We know that next year is really important for International Baccalaureate. It's year two of our three-year cycle. It is when we'll be working with consultants from International Baccalaureate. They will be helping us as we look at the, the transformations that are happening in our schools, looking at the systems that we're building, the schedules that we're looking at again, class schedules, support systems, course selections. There, there are many, many systems pieces that we need to be building next year as we prepare to, to further implement. And with IB, just as a reminder, the primary years and middle years programs, we work to, to, we, we transition to them year by year. So it's not a build the full program and then press go. The diploma program won't start for another two years. We will be building that, that program alongside the middle years program in the high school, but we won't be teaching those courses for two more years. But the other two students next year coming into our classes will start to be engaged in primary years and middle years program curricula, which is very exciting. So part of, part of building International Baccalaureate is also looking at not just focused on IB, but looking holistically at the plan and all the other things that we need to build as we move forward to make sure that we're being thoughtful, that people are with us as we build these things, that we're, we're thinking about the other work that has started and is kind of sitting out there, kind of ready to be re-engaged. So I think this summer for us is really going to be looking at, at an exciting and very full next year and thoughtfully and methodically really planning out the kind of work that we need to do to make sure that this next step in the first year of ACSD is a really, really positive one. So I think that's it for the report. Questions for me, for Vicki, principals, Josh, Caitlin, Mike Lennox?
For members of questions?
I noticed in your report, you talked, you talked a little bit about work you're trying to do to change the teacher evaluation system.
Yeah.
It sounds like you're right at the beginning of that, but do you have any, is it, is it too early to report anything? Or do you have a direction?
We have, yeah, we haven't started the work. We've been talking about it for a couple of years, and it seems to always get like this close, and then we kind of go, "Right, we've got this other work to do." One of the things that, in looking ahead and being thoughtful about what we have the capacity to do next year, we do want to understand International Baccalaureate more, and we have been wondering whether taking another year to understand International Baccalaureate may make more sense in thinking about how we're going to be working together with leadership and, and educators to have a really positive and, and meaningful evaluation system. So that's, that's one thing we're thinking about now. We're really ready for a redo. Our, ours is from 2002. We can't find the electronic copy. That's a problem.
A lot of floppy disks.
I, I forget, I'm forgetting the, the, the way to get into my Radio Shack computer, so.
So wait, so just a clarification. So you're, you're thinking you would want an extra year of IB before you modify the evaluation system, or you would want to, is that what you're...
That's kind of, that's kind of what my, my thought is right now, and also just looking at how much, how many other things we're working on establishing.
Okay.
But we can only do that, and the reason I'm saying this publicly is because I'm hoping that someone will make us do it next year. Not this year, but next year.
I'll ask one. I'd like to echo, that report is so full of great information and it's well-presented and really worth a deep dive for everybody who's got a copy of it. Those who want to, should take a look at it.
And I think I've actually got just a paper copy to pass around here if anyone wants to look at it.
You know, one thing that I found fascinating there was, this will be how much time any school was spending in certain areas, recess, PE, and all that. And I'm just curious, did that information cause a conversation, or it was sort of more reflective of the priorities of each community? And how do we respect those as we move forward with kind of unified curriculum?
I, I guess I'm curious to know what the principals think, because they, they were the ones that filled that work, those charts out and looked at kind of recess and time in different areas. I, I've had a lot of individual conversations with people about it. Anyone?
I think there's more conversations to be had from that equation of staff. So I mean, that's not saying a lot, but I don't think the staff has had a lot of time. I don't know if my staff has seen the report. So I think the staff needs a chance to look at it. If the teachers are in the middle, I think there's conversations to be had from that equation of staff.
I can wait a long time.
I had a great conversation with an art teacher at multiple schools at the Spring of the Arts Festival, who was saying, "You know, I have a different amount of time that I teach art in each of these schools." I said, "I know." Because I just collected all of them. But I really, I mean, I really asked principals to provide this so that we would have something concrete to talk about. We haven't had the time then to process it post-collection yet.
But, just on that same question, so that's something that we are going to be looking at and working on and talking about, and I think all of us are clear that we're not moving to an absolute of everyone has X amount of this, and X amount of this, and X amount of this, and we want to keep some variability and some, some oxygen in, in our, in our planning and in our thinking. But I think it does raise, as we look at the, you know, these questions about electives and art and world languages and all these other things, those are, those, those are tied to money. And so we do have to have those conversations in terms of budgeting and, and things like that. So certainly, we will be talking more about that and, and working through that together to figure out what, what's critical, and addressing, you know, places where there's not enough as well. Sorry.
I think that one thing I, I noticed was there's a big difference in the planning type of each of the buildings. So I think that's, you know, there's some issues there if you're going to continue working on IB and developing things, that that's definitely got to be looked at.
Yeah.
And then some buildings, you know, but... And then some buildings, you know, give so much energy and time to literacy, where others don't, and it may be because of their special schedule. But I thought there was a big distinction.
Yeah, and, you know, and right now, too, we have different lengths of day in every school. Common planning time is really critical, and it's going to be a requirement for IB. It's a requirement anyway for us to connect together as professionals and plan together and talk about, especially when we're working. Right now, in, you know, if you're a fourth grade teacher in Cornwall, you may be the only, you know, you're the only fourth grade teacher. So finding opportunities to bring people together, too, that's something that is really powerful and meaningful for teachers and important as we're building units of study for International Baccalaureate and all the work that's going to increasingly, I think, it's going to, there's going to be a huge benefit to it. It's not just going to be time, it's going to be real, like, go time. It's going to be, you know, it's going to be meaningful. Yeah.
Anyone else? All right. Well, yeah. Is this posted on ACSD or ACSDU?
It is. It's under, I think it's under About Us Strategic Plan, and then it says Strategic Plan Report 2017. Yep.
All right. Well, while you still have it forward, the next item on the agenda is just an update on the creative configuration.
Okay. So our, I've been sending kind of written updates. Additional information to add, our IB primary and middle years design teams are meeting this week, and they are working to gather their collective wisdom, and we're working to create a template for them to provide a recommendation, kind of what they've found through their research, what their thinking is in terms of looking at where we're headed with International Baccalaureate. So both teams are doing that. That will go into my recommendation, which I am sending to the board next Monday. And I'm also going to post that on our website, you know, because I think a lot of people want to know and want to see that. We'll probably send a blast out, too, so people know that it's out there, so people don't have to go and find it as well. And that recommendation will include the research that both the primary and middle years teams have done. It will include information that we've gathered from the listening tours, so community information as well. Will include cost and logistics and looking at all of those pieces, licensure, et cetera, and then my recommendation.
From the board point of view, a lot of questions about how we structure the conversation and the debate. And we'll have the recommendation, it won't be sprung upon on the 19th, I mean, it'll be, you know, it is a recommendation to move forward with the change of configuration. It won't be sprung upon us that night. We'll have a week to chew on it. And I think that, you know, if the recommendation is to move forward, we'll have a meeting or similar to the IB meeting, we need to get public and local authorities to weigh in. I assume if the recommendation is to move forward, that there will be plenty of people there to speak. We'll sort of run a public program, allow them to speak before, do the testimony, and then we'll move into the debate among ourselves. But I would, you know, obviously, it would be important, like, just to have the information early, to have a good thought process about it, and be prepared for the debate that evening. And we'll keep it structured as we do with IB, and hopefully, you know, a robust conversation and a satisfying conclusion for at least the best majority of those. All right. You are still on.
Do you want to leave that up?
Could I just ask another question? It goes back to strategic, some of the information, it was your teaching plan, and then it also touches on this. There was some new numbers in there in the kindergarten and ready section that talked about the percentage of kids who were enrolled in publicly funded pre-K programs. And it was a high percentage. And do you think that, does that include, are you publicly funded if you are going to a private partner with a voucher?
Okay. You got it?
Yeah, I got it. So we have, it says the ACSD pre-K program enrollment is an interesting topic because three of our seven elementary schools have pre-K programs, and four of them don't. And so when do we develop a school residency policy? Students attend the school in the town where they, students attend the school in the town where they live, with some clearly articulated exceptions to that. The question became, is that equitable at the pre-K level? And so we were trying to think about how, so we developed this procedure as a supplement to that policy. So essentially, it says our pre-K schools, Bridport, Salisbury, and Ripton, will give priority enrollment to local families who have to decide by May 1st if they'll enroll their kids in the following year. By May 10th, the principals will announce any remaining openings. So once the local students have enrolled, there may or may not be openings at the three-year-old level, at the four-year-old level. And so when they announce those openings, they'll also announce, what's the schedule for that age group? So then any kid from any one of those towns, Cornwall, Mary Hogan, Shoreham, Waybridge, any of those schools in towns that don't have a pre-K program, will have an opportunity to apply by May 24th. By June 1st, they'll be notified whether or not they are accepted, and if they weren't accepted, then they'll be waitlisted. It's just about using a lottery system so that that is fair. With a couple of notes, if a local family moves in after this process, after missing a deadline in this process, they could automatically get bumped to the top of the waitlist. So we continue to maintain priority for our local families without kicking a kid out, you know, maybe from who would have gone to Cornwall had there been a pre-K program. Now they've enrolled, but somebody that moved into Salisbury, the Salisbury kid would just be at the top of the waiting list. So that's the proposed procedure. Vicky, did I miss anything in that? For moving this forward? Any questions on that? Yeah.
Is there any discussion about opening up pre-Ks in the other schools?
Yeah, so we have had a lot of discussions about what does the future of pre-K in Addison Central look like? So yes, there's discussion. We don't have answers yet. Yeah. Jason?
Have those discussions ranged to include some of the area of preschool programs and parents? We're a lot concerned during our conversation about the entrance age, about the availability of childcare at the pre-K level in the district area. Have you looked at that at all as it comes, as this conversation addressing that concern in any way?
You're asking about capacity for meeting the needs of, yeah, I mean, it's absolutely on our radar. We know that we have a distinct need to increase capacity for pre-K in the area. Yes, that is a factor. Other questions? Yeah, Chris?
So does this, I'm just a little confused. Do you have anything towards that?
So that's, yes, in that we won't have slots that go unfilled, or we shouldn't have slots that go unfilled. So if Ripton has capacity to serve, you know, 11 kids at a time, but they only have six kids in Ripton or Hancock tuitioning in, you know, so at any rate, we wouldn't end up having empty slots. So it opens slots up to residents of ACSD to go to pre-K tuition-free like their peers in the towns that do offer pre-K programs. So yes, but it's a small step in increasing capacity. Yeah, Ruth?
I just wanted to clarify to the board, this is a procedure for a policy that we have not yet passed on our agenda in two weeks. So the language for the policy that relates this to key communities has come around.
Thank you. That's helpful context.
Yeah, exactly. Best of luck.
Yeah.
Could you describe to me what we offer for pre-K at the four schools, just in terms of, there's a week hours per week?
So actually, it'd be better if you hear that from principals, because it's different across them. Though I have them in a table, I don't have them memorized. So Jen, what does it look like at Bridport?
Bridport, our three-year-olds get two days a week from 7:45 until 1:00. And then our four-year-olds get three days a week from 7:45 until 1:30.
And Bernanda at Salisbury?
Salisbury, three-year-olds get two mornings a week, Monday morning, Fridays, from 7:45 until 1:00. And four-year-olds get two full days, Tuesdays and Thursdays, from 7:45 to 1:30, with an expansion for an over two-day, that allows them to actually be there. So they can, you know, actually, three days a week.
And Tracy at Ripton?
We have a four-year-old program, four days a week, on 8/31.
Are they all fully subscribed?
Uh huh. I recall.
It's a little hard to tell, but I think we might have, for next year, they will be fully enrolled, based on our projections.
We were just sort of here, right, and we have three openings that we've been filling, but we're having discussions, so we're not sure.
And Bridport is not. I can say probably licensing allows of seventeen inter-year-olds, seventeen inter-year-olds, and I think we have under ten preschools.
If we're talking about class configurations and possibly moving straight to middle school, would that open up more space in some of the counseling schools in area to increase pre-K?
Do you want to speak to that, Lynn?
Certainly, possibly, with the Shorm. That would open up the classroom, one of the main things that help us back going forward with it. Yeah, well, there's two things that would help us back. One is classroom space. Do we have a place where we put a preschool classroom? And the second one is, could we fund a preschool that was long enough to support families at work? So a lot of preschools that are half-days, I think a lot of families are working, they will bury her other places, but still take advantage of the full-day preschool daycare setup. We need to build something long enough to support more to families. As soon as a classroom frees up, that's the first thing where everyone in Shorm starts thinking about it.
And we've talked about multiple options, and part of our kind of waiting is moving to see the happenstance. Because there's a couple of different directions that we can go for pre-K. So a lot of the families will pick this, then maybe, then like this, or maybe that.
Is there any possibility of lending the pre-K program that's subsidized by the state in private, so that parents can have a longer day from your school?
Yeah, no, 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 that's something that's been discussed. It hasn't been discussed with private provider to say it would look like this. And there is at least one school in Addison County that way that has the whole thing as private provider coming in and providing it. So we keep our eyes on that to see what happens.
When I ask about schedule, I'm also curious about, these are just school-year programs, right?
Any other questions?
All right. Josh, you are next on our.
I am. So we are going to talk about a capital reserve fund, and the first thing we're going to do is we're going to walk down to the biggest project we're going to be talking about, which is the bathroom renovation. So everybody, let's stand up. We're taking a field trip. All the city for a while, there's asbestos in them, they're not handicap accessible, they're very old, and.
The girls are almost the same, right? Or is the boys?
No, they're identical. So what the project is, is taking this and basically identical on each wing, taking this.
These were the first ones. They've been for twenty years.
What's wrong? Must be really disgusting. There's a crack, I guess it is.
It's a different issue. You're bringing up a different issue. It's all on every door. You should do.
Everyone is back. So I wanted to tour you through that, because that is one of our largest projects on our list. The original budget, we were, had originally talked about doing that project in two phases, one side and the other side. We had a budget there originally of $200,000 that was based on a bathroom project that they did here at the high school in 2015. We had three bidders. Originally, we advertised it, the whole public bidding process, had three people we expected to get pricing from. On bid day, we got one from the McKernan Group. So here's the existing, what you just walked through. And that, this is just the west side. And then the new plan, so on the west side is where the boys restroom would be, there's a unisex bathroom as well. Then on the east side would be the ladies room, as well as another unisex. So they're really mirror images, just boys on one side, girls on the other. So this is what we looked at two weeks ago at our last board meeting, before we had the bid results back, just as an FYI. So what's changed since we last met? We received the bids for the bathroom project. We had the bidders provide both a phase one and then a complete project price, to see what type of savings we would have. Also, on the list that I sent out to you, there's, I'll pop this up on the screen in a second, security improvements. So we've been talking about in the high school, because this is an open campus, how we can make this a little more secure. We had originally talked about doing something with fire alarm, which was going to be a pretty intensive project. Bruce has since come up with a plan to do something, he thinks, with the door harbor system and some other notifications that can accomplish the same goals, and that has significantly decreased what we think that project would cost, down from $55,000 to about $27,500, which is what we're carrying right now. And as far as the C-Wing project phasing, the recommendation is going to be to delete that project phasing. There's a couple of issues with the project phasing. One is, we will have inequitable facilities in C-Wing for the entire year. The second concern is, if they're in Title IX issues with that, we think we're fine with that, because we're going to do two phases. But once we start phase one, we definitely have to do phase two the following year, which is either budget for it or take it out of the capital reserve fund. The pricing came back from McKernan Group. So phase one, they came back with a number of 167, 363, and phase two of 161, 805. These numbers do have 5% contingency in them, as an owner's contingency, because it's renovation and things will happen. So what we are recommending to the board for your approval is doing the highlighted projects in yellow. We still have some work to do to determine exactly what we need to do in Mary Hogan to repair the galvanized drains in B-Wing, as in identifying exactly where those pipes flow underground and what the scope of that project is. Security improvements, we talked about, we're trying to solidify exactly what that looks like, get some pricing for that as well. Rippton finished painting that exterior. We're just holding off on that one for the moment, until we have hard numbers for there as well. And painting the roof, we're having a somewhat difficult time getting anyone to give us numbers for painting the roof, and we're working on that now. Should hopefully have something soon. Been contacting painting manufacturing companies to try to get some more names, so we are making some progress there.
By the 12th?
By the 12th, we're going to have some pricing there. So we'll be back. So the important part is with the savings, both in the security improvements line, and then originally, we had $200,000 for phase one. We do have the funds, that totals 346 right now, which would leave us a capital reserve balance of 135. And if we did all these projects here, and these were all the exact numbers, we'd still have $70,000 left. Things that are coming up as far as capital projects go is we will have our facilities assessment information back in early August, and that is what we will start building our capital plan with and really seeing from this outside assessor's opinion, do we have seven air healing units that are 35 years old that could all go at any time? And how do we build that into what we use the rest of this money for now or later in building that whole project, that whole plan? So, if you have questions on capital projects?
For members of questions?
So this list is a little bit different than the list that we saw originally.
Yep.
And were, there were some things that?
Yep, so.
Off the list?
Yeah, so last meeting, we talked through that stuff. So there was replacing the concrete pads under the overhang on the west side of Cornwall. That was actually completed this year with some of the reserve money that they set aside. That was actually completed this year, with some of the reserve money that they set aside. Air conditioning for server rooms. When I left construction, we had stopped putting in air conditioning, because most electrical equipment is even rated to 105 degrees, something like that. So I pushed it back to our IT team to say, please, please review this information and tell me exactly what you need as far as specifications. I don't want to just start popping air conditioning units in closets, because that's what they used to do 25 years ago. So I took both of those off. The drying room in MUHS, MUHS, we were doing that this year, because the inspector basically came through and said, you need to do this now, because you're using it, which we are. Mary Hogan's window replacement in E-Wing, that was actually included in the school maintenance budget for FY18, so we pulled that off. Ripped in interior doors to fire code, the life safety inspector basically said that's not required, we don't need to do any work to those, like, to those doors, so that came off. Air conditioning came off. And the water heater, that is not necessary, so we put on painting of the roof, because that's starting to deteriorate, we'd like to catch it now, as opposed to later.
It was actually the water heater that I remember that came off.
Yep.
Okay, so, okay. And then your capital improvement plan that you hope to sort of get more information for August, how far out do you think that will be?
The building of the plan?
No, no, the, the, the plan.
Well, we're getting, so we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
So we had a third-party contractor come in and assess all of our buildings, that happened in April. And so they are taking all that information and putting it all together and entering it into SchoolDude, which is our work order maintenance software. And they're, it's, it's, it's an extensive assessment. So they went into every single building, they looked at everything, outside, inside, electrical, mechanical, aesthetic finishes. And what they will give back to us is based on itemized list, expected life, life of the piece of equipment, for example, or the system that they're looking at, how old it is now, when they recommend replacement, what the replacement cost could be. And so we're waiting to get that information, which will come in early August.
So that's more of a sort of maintenance plan, not a full capital plan? Are you, and does it include grounds too, or just?
Yep, it includes, it includes grounds as well, yeah.
So will you be using that and adding on to it, the sort of bigger?
Yes, the bigger picture.
Like, for example, just as an example, if we were to try to install solar panels or do something like that, that's new construction or new work, but that's not part of the maintenance plan, will you be adding that kind of thing on to a larger plan beyond the maintenance plan?
Sure, that's somewhere in somebody's best dream, I guess.
And that was just?
Right, yeah. So I guess that would be, we need to, we're starting with this maintenance plan, this existing facility is done. And then if there's things that we want to add, and I don't have any, I don't have, I've not started creating a list of those types of things. So we'll have to go out and find out what those are. Yep.
It's not just a maintenance plan, it's really a capital update plan too, right? If you're replacing a piece of machinery or air conditioning, like, you're not just maintaining it, you are budgeting in to that, that you're going to have to replace that within five years by what this report's going to say, or at least trying to estimate.
Right.
And so you'll be creating a capital budget based on this capital plan?
Right, exactly. So we'll look at equipment or systems and say, okay, this system, we think we're going to get two or three more years out of it, and it's going to cost us much to replace. And so that's in FY21. And FY22, this is the list of things that we think we want to do, 23. And, you know, five, we'll start with a five-year plan, we can go out to 10 years, but in 10 years, things change so rapidly that they're often just placeholders at best, so that we can add and adjust. And so that'll be something we'll bring to you guys as well, and review, and have some discussion of it.
Josh, can you talk, oh, sorry, Jason? Can you talk about how you decided on the bathroom design? Did you review any of the things different schools are doing now with regarding bathroom designs, or change the paradigm on that, and make it more gender accessible across the entire business spectrum?
Yes. Design, yeah.
Can you elaborate on that?
So I worked with an architect at Avril, and they actually provided a couple of examples of fairly new work that's been done related to gender and bathrooms. And as we went through that process, and we looked at the space that we had, and the layout of the gender mutual bathroom. The design was mostly flow-through, so you could go in one side and out the other. And every stall was its own individual space with a full door, so you could just, you know, basically walk in, any stall, shut the door, and you're in there totally private, you don't see anybody's feet or anything. And then there was like a communal sink area, a lot like an airport bathroom. And we did look at that, and we talked about it. We were kind of limited on space to do that well. And the other issue is, it immensely increased the price when you start having to put ventilation in every enclosed stall, and do an enclosed stall for every, every spot. And we felt that providing private bathrooms, so there's two private bathrooms in this plan, would allow someone who's not necessarily comfortable going into either boys' or girls' to choose that option, and still have, you know, still have a choice. Not have to go to the other end of the building to, you know, the main office where we have the same setup.
To diversify the objective, at this point, we also provide some of the student groups in school that watch out for the issues around safety, and gender issues, who may ask to prefer what we're doing, which is having the, of the premium male, along with at each of those locations, unisex bathrooms. And we get surveyed by the state, and the state always asks us whether we do that and they refer that to us to this type of option.
Is that a formal process, like a, relatively intentional, or just sort of like a, sort of quick sort of? I'm just interested to know sort of what that, what that process is.
That's certainly intentional, it's certainly intentional, related to those groups, talk to the advisors and technical students, present that. They were actually, they had, they had, they had those discussions, and they needed them in various places. And they were thrilled to find out what to put in there.
Josh, did you, that you write for the one dinner?
Yes.
Do you find that troubling as we move forward through the years of these sorts of projects, as well as that it's something that can be implemented?
It really has to do with the construction climate at whenever, anytime that you're bidding. So I think in future years, we'll probably be having this conversation in January, February. That has a little bit to do with it, people already booked up for the summer. And then it's also a very busy construction climate here and everywhere else right now. There's ebbs and flows to that, so.
So not a cost, right?
No, no. Because we, up until the day of the bid basis, we thought we were getting three prices, which we were comfortable with, and they just didn't, and that sometimes happens.
Jen?
I know that there's a benefit to doing it all at once for logistical reasons. I thought you also indicated that there might be a cost savings, and is, is there? I don't see it.
Yeah, so it's basically seven, $6,000 difference to do, if you combine the two. So they, they gave us a price, so right, so the price for phase one's 167, the price for phase two, which we had them priced phase two, if we were to do it right now, they came in at 161.
Right. I don't get how that's different from what it would be if they were to do phase two next year, though.
They would rebid it next year, and so that price would then increase.
You just don't know what it is.
Right, we just don't know what that would be.
I can tell you, typically, projects that we've had to put off and rebid, they're at least 10% more of the following year, without primary reason.
Further questions?
Seeing none, we need that motion. So is a motion to approve the list of capital projects for FY18?
Second? If you're very good on that? Yes.
Further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, name? Anybody who's seen it? Approved capital projects? All right, next up, we've got some tax anticipation notes. Resolution?
Yep. So most of our schools in the past have got the tax anticipation, and some of the sort of town that's been funded the money before, we receive the state funding. So now on the year three, we're figuring out our tax anticipation. And there's a process to do it, where you look at your projected expenditures, your projected revenues, and you come up with the largest deficit a month, and then you add 5% of your operating budget to that, and that's how that number is created.
Okay, so, need a motion to approve a $3,917,589 operating line of credit from the National Bank of Middlebury. Due no later than June 30th, 2018, at an interest rate of 1.4%. And at the same time, authorizing the treasurer and business manager to borrow against the line of credit as needed on behalf of the board.
Vote.
Thank you, Jason. Chip seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? And we have our tax anticipation note, approval complete, thank you. All right, special funds resolution. Do you want to speak to that in a moment?
Yep, so this is a resolution we've talked about since we did the McGilton resolution, which takes all the special funds that are dedicated to our current local school districts, and have written procedures on how that money's spent, what that money can be spent doing, and just memorializing that in a resolution by the ACSD board to say, we will, in fact, use these funds as they are supposed to be used, and as written in the Articles of Agreement. I have talked to Ruth about putting a parenthetical referencing that the McGilton Fund also has a similar resolution, in case in 25 years, someone finds this and says, nope, McGilton's not on this list, we'll just move on. So I think we'll modify this resolution before it actually gets signed, if it's passed.
All right, McGilton suspenders then for the McGilton Fund.
So I'll move this with that amendment.
All right, so we have a motion to approve this resolution with the addition of the McGilton Fund for Mary Hogan. Have a second?
Second.
Fight over that? All right, all those in favor of the resolution as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? And we have taken care of that. You have a clean copy, Josh, or do you want me to just pull the staple out of this one?
Um, I will just, yeah, and I'll create.
Oh, actually, I should sign it after the McGilton.
Yeah, I'll create a new one, and next time you're in, you're aye.
Sounds good. All right, we've got that. Invoice payment authorization.
Yes, so we've been doing a lot of talking in-house with the finance staff of how often we're going to cut checks. I think I've talked about it here a couple of times, that with the amount of checks that we're going to cut, which will be, you know, probably over 100, 400, 500 a month, that we're thinking we'll cut checks every week. This is the standard invoice payment authorization that all local boards always sign, it's just now for ACSD. But I'm bringing up this process is because we will have directors' orders and checks ready every week, Thursday at 3:30, and we'll need to get them signed by Friday at 9:00, which is actually, in essence, what Lorraine does every week anyway. Not that I'm volunteering her for that.
She's not here.
She's not here, maybe I am. So, because right now, UD3 cuts checks every other week, and ID4 cuts checks on those off weeks, and Lorraine is the person who signs the reviews and signs those checks for both of those boards, so.
But usually they're with somebody else.
Yeah, usually with someone else, yeah.
Steve? Point of clarification, is this is different from reviewing the stuff that we do on Tuesdays, right? Reviewing the bills? Yeah, reviewing the bills, this is.
This is, that's what this is.
That's what this is? Yep.
And so what you're saying, Josh, is that this is going to need to be done every week?
We're going to do it every week.
We need to expand the size of the finance committee then?
So we have no finance committee? So this is really premature, and, and we need a finance committee to do this?
Yeah, and, but we can do this, you know, what, what I know UD3 has always done, I'm not sure what about other boards, is that we've always just authorized any two board members to do that. And we can make that, you know, the job of the finance committee to do that. Would you prefer to wait until you say?
Well, the ID4, we've always done that too, any two board members can do it. But we have a finance committee that oversees it, so there's consistency. And then the chair of the finance committee sets up the schedule to make sure that there's actually somebody there to do it.
Yeah. But for the purposes of just dealing with the resolution tonight, if our, if we were going to go with any two board members, I think we could probably do that.
But doesn't it start, like, the first week in July? You need people to start, and we don't have?
We will, we will by the 19th.
Oh, so the next commit, next board meeting, we're?
We will have a.
We'll have a finance committee, okay.
All right, so how about a motion to approve the resolution for paying directors' orders specifying that any two board members may review directors', may review and approve directors' orders on behalf of the ACSD. Tori moves it?
Second.
Second by Chris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Wait, there's one other section to this? The, the financial reports? And?
Okay, also, the board of directors requests board distribution of the school district financial reports as follows, and I would assume that, since it's electronic, we may also do it to all board members. Everybody okay with that by consensus?
Yes.
Yep, okay. And we shall do, do it that way. All right, policy committee, would you like to report out?
With great luck, we had a quorum today, and we're able to recommend that we get to this body five policies 10 days before the 19th of June. So that means within the next three days or four days, we need to get information to everyone, which we will do, and these cover residence, graduation, facilities, attendance, and nutrition. Three of them, I think, are required policies, and two are the ones that we think are important to get done now.
Are they ACSD-specific policies?
Yes. They're all, they're part of the package we've been chipping away at.
Yeah, as opposed to recommended BSDA, or ones that conform the state statute?
Well, three of them are required by law, and are based on the SBA model policies, with some tweaks. And then two are ones that are specific to ACSD.
Okay.
But they're all specific to ACSD?
Yeah, yeah.
We put our mark on everyone.
All right, so following up on our, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, right down the last.
So in talking about committee configuration, what I would like to do is on the 19th, or before even via email, but before then, this week, if folks would email me sort of their committee preferences, and just some thoughts on this. One is, we will expand to four committees, and before it being a finance committee, to deal not just with directors' orders, but the financial discussions that need to have. Policy, and then we have the community relations, we call it a working group, sort of just allow people to not feel like they're excluded to be part of it.
Okay.
Should we change that to a task force?
Yeah, a task force, a tag force. Okay, so on a much more sort of mundane level, we have been using BoardPAC. We probably should take a formal action on whether we want to continue to use BoardPAC. Thoughts from anybody on it? Anybody, anybody not, yes, Steve?
I like it.
Okay.
It's convenient, it's easy, it's well-organized. I really, I was skeptical about it first, but I do like it.
Contrary opinions?
I have a question. I, I think I've been making mistakes on my RSVP, because everybody seems to be getting my RSVP, and I'm not sure why that is. But we, Suzanne and I both emailed Sharon on that. But I also want to know, is how, can we respond in some way to any of these? Can we, does the BoardPAC allow us to?
Well, we haven't exploited all of its things yet, all of its capabilities, but for right now, it's not a communication tool.
Okay, so if we need to respond to something, we would just do it in a regular email?
Probably.
So it wouldn't be documented on BoardPAC, so others wouldn't be able to see that?
You can make notes that people.
Can you?
So I sent a message via, did anybody get it?
No.
No, okay, so it may not be set up.
But we also, you know, we only scratched the surface in our initial training.
I think we could probably do a 2.0 training.
Jason is patiently waiting.
No, I'm sorry, actually, I was just going to say, I think if we, if we want to continue forward with it, we should really spend the time.
Training.
Figure out how to use it more fully, because I don't think we use it especially fully. There's a few quirks that would be useful, like I can't see any of the attached documents in certain formats like mobile. So just, you know, we could maybe dedicate some time or effort to diving in a little bit more, that'd be useful. I, but yes, I like it.
Along with, along with that comment, when, so as I record minutes, so if I try to, like, the board resolutions, I have to leave my administrative side and go back to the other side a little bit, and sometimes, depending on how they've gone into the document side, I can either copy and paste them.
Well, I just, let's not get into specifics about technical issues. We can do that during the training.
So I just think it would be more training, but I love, I mean, it's great.
Two browsers works for that.
Yeah.
Two screens.
Yeah, well, just two browsers open that.
So it does come at a cost? Would you remind us what the cost is?
It's 170 bucks a month.
So it's 170 bucks a month, so it's not, not cheap, but.
It's one of the cheaper options for boards to use.
And we're only on a month-by-month, so we're not beholden for a multi-year contract.
Is that still true if we continue with it?
Oh, yeah, just add infinitum.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Move to continue to.
But definitely with the idea that we get more, you know, stroke it now. I, I, and I just pull things up, that's about all I view of it for us.
Chris, before your motion, I, one conversation that came up is that you don't need to RSVP to a committee meeting if you're not on the committee. Some concern is we're going to end up on people's permanent records.
Because people don't.
Because you show up as not attending, if you RSVP, you're not going to be there.
We, we do look at that.
So it goes on.
No, but I mean, the RSVP, Sharon and I look at that to see who's going to be there and who's not. So that, that is helpful information.
Yeah, yeah. And for this meeting as well, it is actually quite helpful.
So it was also the reason that we were all, all the committees, because we couldn't separate it out, wasn't that part of it?
Right.
So that was a confusion component.
But in terms of the issue, like with the policy committee of not having a quorum, sometimes if, if we're using RSVP, we could maybe avoid getting into those situations. So that's something that, I don't think we've talked about using that in that way, but that would be helpful.
All right, we have a motion from Chris to move forward with, to continue with BoardPAC. We have a second.
But I thought Chris said to continue with BoardPAC with more training, did you not?
I can say that.
I thought, sorry, maybe I just thought you said it.
I said that.
Ow!
Jason said it.
Jason said it.
Did you?
The motion was by Chris.
I have a type of favor here to follow through.
Yeah. Do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Thank you, Jason. All those in favor of continuing with BoardPAC, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstaining? All right. We will now, well, is there any other business before we go into executive session? There being none, I would like a motion to go into executive session to discuss negotiations, the public discussion which would put our side at a distinct disadvantage. Chris and Nick? Steve?
I will be using my phone.
All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will go into executive session in just a few minutes, once we give the camera a chance to pack up.